Let's go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacker as vice chair, and I'm Greg Rosenbaum, chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, planning director, Eric England, assistant planning director, Mike Carter, current planning manager, Jennifer Taylor of the city law department, and Kathy Epperson is our recording secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us down here. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard or perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the city council for another public hearing and final disposition by the city council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the city council. Lastly, upon the advice of the law department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the planning department so that they're made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meanings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. We're going to go ahead and get started with the consent cases. The new consent agenda is up to date, but the old one had cases, case three on for approval. That's been removed, and for layover, cases eight and twenty have been added, and it should be on your copy of the new consent agenda. I'll get started with reading of the consent cases. Again, if you want a case removed from consent, I'll ask, and you'll have to stand up at that time and let it be known. So, we'll get started here. Agenda item number four, case C eight dash twenty-four dash sixty-six, applicant Tommy LaCarbo. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the G.I. district. This was laid over from our March meeting. Location, one thirty-four thirty-five A Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number six, case C three dash twenty-four dash ninety-three, applicant Centrus Federal Credit Union. Request approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from low density residential to office commercial. Location, northeast of sixty-sixth street and Ames Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number seven, case C twelve dash twenty-four dash one oh one, applicant Erhart Griffin and Associates. It's on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Wilbur addition replat to a minor plat inside city limits. Portions of the property are located within the floodway overlay district and the flood fringe overlay district. Location, sixty thirty, South Sixtieth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eight, I've got to get to my old copy here. Agenda item number eight, case, I got it. Yep. Agenda item number eight, case C twelve, oh, it's on for layovers, I'm sorry. I'll wait on that. You're right. Agenda item number nine, case C ten dash twenty-four dash ninety, C ten dash twenty-four dash ninety-one, C seven dash twenty-four dash ninety-two, applicant Centrus Federal Credit Union. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R five thirty-five and C C to L O with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district, along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow financial services in the L O district. Location, northeast of sixty-sixth street and Ames Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed?
We're not sure. We don't really understand how it affects the houses that are in that area.
If you want to get up and ask questions or give your testimony, then you're going to want to remove it so that you can come up and do that.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to take six and nine off of consent for approval. Okay, cases six and nine. I even made myself a note to read it with the layovers, and I, yeah, I missed it. Anyways. Agenda item number ten, case C ten dash twenty-four dash ninety-five, applicant Gerber Architecture. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R four to R five. Property is a designated local landmark. Location, five oh two North Fortieth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eleven, case C ten dash twenty-four dash one hundred, applicant L Lewis. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R two and G C to R five. Location, eighty-eight thirty-eight Lake Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twelve, case C ten dash twenty-four dash one oh nine, applicant Esteban Benitez. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R four thirty-five to R five thirty-five. Location, northeast of Forty-Eighth Avenue and Y Street. Anyone wish to have this removed?
Yeah, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do here.
If you want to, yeah, if you want to give public testimony about it, then we have to remove it.
Do it, I have to do what?
If you want to discuss it or give a testimony of some sort, then we have to take it off the consent agenda, and then it'll be put on the regular agenda, and then we'll discuss that.
If I don't do anything, we won't talk about it.
Then we won't talk about it, and it is on for approval.
If I don't do anything, it'll go for approval?
Are you the applicant or are you a neighbor?
I just work for the applicant.
Okay. You want to keep it on for it to be approved?
Yeah.
Unless there's, unless you have any concerns with the report, but...
You want it approved? I want it approved, yeah.
Okay, leave it on. Leave it on. You don't have to do a thing.
Well, you might want to sit down and wait for it.
Yeah. In about five minutes, you'll be able to leave, so.
All right.
All right. So, seeing none, that's been left on twelve. Agenda item number thirteen, case C ten dash twenty-four dash one ten, applicant Julia Flores Roman. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from G I to R five. Location, twenty-two twenty-four Papleton Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number fourteen, case C ten dash twenty-four dash one fourteen, applicant Michelle Austin. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from G I to C C. Location, twenty-three oh four Grace Street. Anyone wish to have this, this case removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eighteen, case C seven dash twenty-four dash ninety-nine, applicant Car Wash Store LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the C C district. Property is located in a major commercial corridor overlay district. Location, one forty-four forty-five West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number nineteen, case C seven dash ten dash sixty-two, applicant Marion High School. It's on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R two district. Location, forty-nine ten North Seventy-second Street and seventy-four oh oh Military Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-one, case C seven dash eighty-nine dash thirty-seven, applicant West Side Middle School. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R two district. Location, eighty-six oh one Arbor Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-two, case C seven dash twenty dash two sixty-one, applicant The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow cultural services in the R four thirty-five district. Location, thirty-two fifteen State Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-four, case C seven dash fifteen dash three fourteen, applicant Kiwett Infrastructure Group. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow surface parking in a central business district. Property is located within an A C I one P L overlay district. Location, fifteen fifteen Cummings Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-five, case C fourteen dash twenty-four dash one eleven, applicant Planning Board. It is on for approval. Request approval of the vacation of a portion of Craig Avenue east of Fifty-seventh Street to its eastern terminus. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. I got to find my number eight. Agenda item number eight, case C twelve dash twenty-four dash one oh four, applicant Joe Feisner. It is on for layover. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Spring Grove R V Park, a minor plat outside city limits, with approval of a waiver to section fifty-three nine-nine sidewalks and section fifty-three nine-three street surfacing. Property is located within the floodway overlay district. Location, southeast of Two Hundred Thirty-four Street and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Have to bear with me, I'm on my old consent agenda. Agenda item number sixteen, case C ten dash twenty-four dash one twelve, C eleven dash twenty-four dash one thirteen, applicant Foundations Development. It is on for layover. Request approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district, along with a repeal of the P K overlay for a portion of the site. Location, southwest of Twenty-second Street and Papleton Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number seventeen, case C eight dash twenty-four dash ninety-four, C ten dash fifteen dash two forty-six, applicant Shelter Vault Theater. It is on for layover. Request approval of a special use permit to allow indoor entertainment in the G I district, along with a major amendment to a parking adjustment for a mixed-use development. Location, forty-three eighty-three Nicholas Street, Unit two oh four. Anyone wish to have this removed?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, having it removed, so I don't understand the layover part of this.
No, if it's left on consent and layover, no action will be taken today on it. When it comes back on to the agenda, maybe thirty days from now, maybe longer, then there would be time for discussion. But if you want to discuss it today, you can remove it and have that opportunity. Say what?
I request remove it.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Agenda item seventeen. Okay, and that. Agenda item number twenty, case C seven dash twenty-four dash one oh five, applicant Joe Feisner. It is on for layover. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow campground in the A G district. Property is located within the floodway overlay district. Location, southeast of Two Hundred Thirty-four Street and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Is that twenty-three? Here we go. Agenda item number twenty-three, case C seven dash twenty-four dash one oh eight, C ten dash twenty-four dash one oh seven, applicant Todd Adams. It is on for layover. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the C C district, with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location, fifty-one twenty-one North One Hundred Thirty-second Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. Agenda item number twenty-three. Okay, so before I ask for a motion, I'm just going to remind everybody that if you were here for one of those cases that I just read, and it's left on, on the consent agenda, no further action will be taken today. It'll either be approved or laid over for a later meeting. So, just want to make certain everybody's got one last opportunity. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion on the cases that were on consent for approval.
Motion to approve case number four, seven, ten, eleven...
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent items that were on for layover?
Motion to layover from the items number eight, sixteen, and twenty.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, so those cases that were on for approval and layover, no further action will be taken today. We thank you for coming down. You are welcome to stay, or you are free to leave, but we thank you again for coming down.
Sir, you're good. You're good, you can go if you like.
Yeah, you're good, been approved.
We're beat?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
See, Bob. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started with the regular agenda, and... Agenda item number one. Agenda item number one, case C ten dash twenty-one dash nine, C twelve dash twenty-one dash ten, applicant Celebrity Homes Omaha. Final plat approval of Deer Crest North lots one through one forty-six, Outlet A, a subdivision outside city limits, with rezoning from D R to R four, along with approval of a waiver to section fifty-three eight-two G five, maximum grade. Location, southeast of One Hundred Fourteenth and State Streets. May we hear from the applicant? Eric, you're going to take this?
Yep. Okay. Yeah, no public hearing on this item. So, this is a final plat for one hundred and forty-six lots and one outlot. The final plat had previously come to Planning Board, however, with subsequent review of public paving plans, Public Works determined and has been coordinating with the applicant that a waiver request for maximum grade to exceed maximum grade of five percent within fifty feet of intersection was needed. So, we have coordinated with the applicant to minimize any of those impacts and looked at all possible solutions, but due to existing street stubs in the grade that is present on the site, we are acceptable to the waiver for the one intersection. Staff recommends approval of a waiver to section fifty-three eight-two G five, maximum grade. Approval of the rezoning from D R to R four. Approval of the final plat subject to submit of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Okay, thank you. Since this was on the administrative meeting, part of the agenda, there will be no opportunity for public testimony. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of a waiver to section fifty-three eight-two G five, maximum grade. Approval of the rezoning from D R to R four, and approval of the final plat subject to submit of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forty, and request on the city council for final action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number two, case C seven dash nineteen dash thirty-one, applicant Saint Robert Bellarmine Church of Omaha. Request approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R two district. Property is located within a major commercial corridor overlay district. This was laid over from our March meeting. Location, one nineteen oh oh Pacific Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, seventeen hundred Farnham Street. With me, Father Dave Reason.
Dave Reason, Omaha, Nebraska, one-one-eight-oh-two Pacific Street.
Thank you. So, as the chairman said, we were here last month. This is an application for a major amendment ultimately to allow a new sign for Saint Robert Bellarmine Church at One Hundred and Twentieth and Pacific. As you might recall from the discussion last time, it's a bit of a unique situation because you've got a major commercial intersection in the city. Probably everybody's familiar with it. This corner of that intersection is zoned R two. The other three parts of the intersection are zoned commercial, and they are in commercial uses. Big Fred's is across the street, of course, to the south. There's a strip center to the southwest, and a kind of an office park to the, directly to the west. And so, the church is requesting approval for a new sign. The sign does exceed the, the regulation for the sign. The sign we were here for last time was twelve feet in height and ninety-two square feet in area. The direction and the agreement, and we appreciate that opportunity, was to go back and work with the planning department, try and come back with a sign that everybody could agree upon. I want to apologize, I was not involved in the discussions in the interim, but there was some misunderstanding on the timing of when we needed to get the new proposed sign to the planning department for them to have sufficient time to analyze that and put that in their report. We thought we had more time to do that, frankly, than we did, and so we got it to them later, as it turned out, than we should have. So, the staff report wasn't able, and the planning department may not have had time to fully evaluate the proposal. But the new proposed sign is about two feet shorter. The message board part of it is similar in size. I think somebody on the board at our last, at the meeting last month, had suggested maybe trying to shrink the fin on top of the message board, for lack of a better term, and the newly proposed sign, which you can sort of see, I need to zoom out, don't I, is smaller in that regard. So, this is the proposed sign. I won't speak for the planning department. I don't think I could represent, and they would disagree. I don't know that we have agreement, but we are here with a smaller sign. We did hear you, we did hear them. It is a smaller sign, and it is bigger than the regulations allow, but given the nature of this intersection, the fact that they'll be removing existing signage on the site, we do think that this sign makes sense, and we would request approval of this newly proposed reduced-size sign for Saint Robert Bellarmine. And with that, happy to answer any questions. Father Dave, anything you want to add? Go ahead.
The new sign is a little bit still larger than what's acceptable, I guess, but it makes it easier to see, and believe it or not, the larger sign is much less expensive, saving thousands and thousands of dollars. It might make difference to you, but that hurts my pocketbook, so, thanks for your consideration.
And Father, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the vein of the dollars, you've mentioned, as we're sitting, about forty thousand dollars difference?
Mm-hmm. The larger sign is less, by about forty thousand dollars.
So, one of the directives that we had from last month's meeting was to have the planning department and your organization group get together and just try and work things out. Can you tell us what kind of conversations took place, and where you found some compromise, perhaps?
Again, I apologize, I was not involved in those discussions. I know we've got a smaller sign here before you. Father, were you part of those conversations as well?
One of my parishioners was dealing with it, and so I did not have direct contact with it.
Do you have like a building, building manager in your, in your church?
He's just a parishioner, he's not really a building manager.
So, he wasn't, was he familiar with the issues that were raised?
Oh, yeah, he's on the committee.
He is, it's Terry with the N A Consulting, correct? Yeah, so he's, he's an engineer, he's familiar with this process, and very familiar with the issues that were raised.
Okay. And there was some question in the pre-meeting about whether or not the sign's going to be manufactured, or you already own the sign, you bought the sign, and if you did, you probably can't return it, I'm guessing, right? So, can you tell us who owns the sign? Is it owned?
We don't, we do not own it yet, sir. They still own it, but they said they will give us a little bit larger sign for lower price than the other one that they would order for us.
How much lower?
About forty thousand dollars. Amazing how expensive those suckers are.
Yeah. That seems to be the main sticking point here, though, is the sign, the size of the video board.
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct. And I think, go ahead.
Yeah, so, just a theoretical question, is it worth your investment to spend another forty thousand dollars to get the sign?
I would take that back to my finance counsel and see if, and the people that are on the committee that are working on the signage for it. So, if it's, you know, I hope you'll consider, but if you don't, if you say no, then we just have to go back to square one and ask them to raise some more money and...
Father, do you know what size that sign was going to be, that was forty thousand dollars more expensive?
You know, I don't...
I think that would be the sign that would comply with the regulations.
Okay. I would assume you'd manufacture it to the specifications that are...
Right. Right. And I think the cost, my understanding is that the cost difference is because that's a custom manufactured sign where this is a standard size sign that they probably manufacture a bunch of them and have them in a warehouse somewhere. I don't, I don't know a lot about manufacturing signs, but it makes sense that a custom size would cost more than a, than a standard size.
So does the church bear the cost of that? Or does the archdiocese help support that as well?
I wish the archdiocese. Maybe you can talk to the archbishop for me. That'd be great, you know, but now the parish would have to fund that.
And in all seriousness, again, I wish we were here with an agreed-upon resolution. I don't like putting the board in the spot and I recognize and acknowledge that we're doing that. And it's not for lack of good faith. It's the, the manufacturing of the sign, and so what we could do within the constraint of having that standard size video board was shrink the rest of it, make the base a little bit lower, make the fin on top smaller. But unless you go to that much more expensive custom-sized sign, this is, this is kind of where we are. And so I do, I apologize for putting the board in that spot. But where, you know, again, I do think it is justified, given the nature of this particular intersection, the fact that they're taking, they're removing existing signage on the site. This is a high-speed street. What's the speed limit there? Forty, forty-five miles an hour? So people are going by fairly, fairly quickly on a busy four-lane street. I, I do think there's justification here for the larger sign in this particular case at this particular location.
So, sorry, I'm just a little confused. The news, the actual sign itself, the video board, is that a smaller sign than what you were previously proposing, or is that the same size as previously before?
It is the same, it's the larger, the larger ones, what we're proposing again, which we previously did. We shrunk the outside to make the whole thing a little smaller, but the.
But the outside casing costs an additional forty thousand dollars.
No, 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 the sign itself.
The video board itself is the standard size. The video board is the same. The frame around the video board is smaller. The base is a little bit lower. There wasn't a lot of room to work there.
Okay.
And the fin on top is smaller.
What would the cost be to get a size, a video, what's the cost to get a video board that meets?
Forty thousand more.
So if you were to get one that is in compliance, it would be forty thousand dollars more.
Right. Yeah, it's confused because that one's a lot smaller, but it's a custom size. That's the deal.
What's total project cost? Like, what are we talking?
You know, I don't remember. Hundred and twenty thousand, I think it's.
So it'd either be one twenty or one sixty.
Yeah. So if you take up a collection here, it'd be fine.
I'll remind, I'll remind him, I'll remind him about finances and public officials after the meeting. So, yeah.
You know, I very much would like to see this work. I really would. I think we all would like to see this work. The issue becomes precedence. And I understand the rationale that you're giving, given the fact that you have commercial zoning on all the other three corners there, right? And I, and I get that, and I'm kind of sympathetic with you on that.
And Mr. Page, I would just interrupt you and add that this site even has MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay zoning on it. So it's like it's trying to be zoned commercial, and we could be here asking for a rezoning, which would help our sign issue, but would open up a whole other set of potentially unintended consequences. And so we don't want to do that either. And you raise a good point about precedent, but in this case, you know, this is a unique situation, I do think, as you were saying, with the other three corners.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions before we hear from Eric? Eric?
Yeah, so I just, just to clarify, if this property were to be rezoned with a common commercial district, so let's say the CC district, it is still a civic use type. So while the height of the monument sign could be twelve feet, the, the total budget area could be forty square feet. So it doesn't, even if this was allow, even if this property was zone CC, this would not meet, this would be twice the budget, more than, a little more than twice the budget allowed with that. But the MCC does allow the twelve-foot in height, but because of the residential zoning, it takes the more restrictive, which is typically the six-foot in height. So I just wanted to clarify that, that aspect. You know, obviously, we, we've talked about this last month and we looked at some other recent signage and electronic monument signs that this board has approved and staff has supported regarding, you know, this use type with religious assembly and we recognize that technology is changing and, you know, there are more and more requests for this type of digital signage and we are continuing to explore and look at our codes and, you know, what the appropriate number is and, you know, perhaps it's slightly larger than forty square feet of what we're recommending, but at this time, that's what we have supported. So, yes, we did receive, you know, the, the new signage plan and took a look at it. Obviously, the report doesn't get into a lot of detail on that, except there is a mention of it. But we are still recommending, you know, a reduction and, you know, if, if, if that means that there's, you know, some type of signage that's, you know, forty-two square feet or not forty square feet, that maybe could be a better price. I mean, we're willing to talk through that. I mean, forty is kind of a rounded number, but if there's a a standard electronic sign that is being produced, that could be, could be had more affordable, we're obviously willing to have that conversation. But at this point, more than double in the budget area and the height exceeding, we just think that's a very large electronic sign. And, you know, with, with this use type with being a church and a school component, we feel it's excessive. And so we do have a recommendation, but it is subject to the criteria listed in the recommendation report. You know, the performance standards, obviously, the ten-second interval, the brightness, things like that, which I think everybody is on board for. But also to, you know, to decrease, decrease the total sign, but, or total signage to forty square feet as well as a height limitation. So you can definitely ask questions and we can continue the conversation, but I'll put the recommendation out there for you to consider. Staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R two district subject to the eleven conditions in the report.
Any additional comments or questions?
Yeah. Father Dave, if I could ask you to come back up, if that's all right, Mr.?
Sure, you can, you can do that.
Just, just a clarification on the messaging that you plan to display on the video. Is it going to be a rolling video? Is it static messaging? What type of messaging do you, and content do you plan to put in this?
It's information about the parish, of course. We have, Easter just happened, I think, let people know that. Or just positive messages. We have a free meal every week, or every month for anyone that wants to come to the church. We have food drives once a month. So it's just to get the good news out and invite people to come in and get to know more about us. And there, I think it's a graphic sign. I mean, you can change it and put a picture up even.
But it's not like a television commercial sign where there's going to be continual movement. It's not a rolling video.
And it's, it's a, it's a good point, and if there's a desire for a condition of approval that there not be motion video or something, if the concern is safety and people being distracted driving by. I remember a long time ago, the discussion over electronic billboards. And I think we'd be open to limitations on, you know, prohibition of, of actual video. I don't know what exactly that term is, but, you know, no, no moving television commercials, as you said, that would be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
A motion, approval of major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R two district subject to the eleven conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris.
Yes.
Kate.
No.
Sotolongo.
Yes.
Rose Sacker.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Approved six to one.
Thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're all welcome to come to Saint Robert's next Sunday for your.
Item number three, case C eight dash twenty-four dash sixty, C seven dash twenty-four dash sixty-one. Applicant, Open Door Mission. This was, no, we had it fold off. Request approval of a large project special use permit to allow development over ten acres in the GI District, along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow a non-commercial day shelter in the GI District. This was laid over from our March meeting. Location, southeast of twentieth and East Locust Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please? Name and address.
My name is Matt Stoffel with Valley Pointer Mecado Architects. I reside at forty-seven forty-nine Capitol Avenue here in Omaha.
I'm Candace Gregory, President and CEO of Open Door Mission and Lyte House, twenty-eight twenty-eight North Twenty-Third Street East, Omaha, Nebraska.
I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Candace Gregory.
Thank you.
Zip code is six eight one one oh. The Open Door Mission is a gospel rescue mission. We meet the individuals and family needs and inspire hope for lasting change. The Open Door Mission will be seventy years old November first. I've been with the Open Door Mission for the last twenty-eight years. This October, I'll hit twenty-nine. I started when I was nine, maybe. I'm excited to share with you how generous and compassionate our community is. We are able to provide nine hundred and seventeen safe shelter beds every night. I'd love to share with you that we have a bed for everyone, but that's not the case. In fact, it's not really inclement weather and yet we're in overflow. We also provide huge housing and food programs. Currently, we serve about forty-seven hundred and forty-seven meals through all of our food programs, whether that be a hot meal, sack lunch, street ministry, or even one of our manna food pantries for consumers that are experiencing poverty. We also offer forty programs for free to the community. The Open Door Mission, over the last seventeen years, has been developing the property that is located on our main campus. Although we do have neighborhood outreach centers located in Council Bluff and Elkhorn, our main programs are offered in a four-city block radius. When you fly out of Omaha, you just can't miss us. We're right there on the right. We are in a position post-COVID that we would like to expand our services that we already currently offer in a more quality care environment. With the food crisis in our community, we have seen that we need more space for those that have mental and behavioral health to seek a meal. That means that those that are on our campus don't like to be squished in like sardines and they want a little more, more elbow room at the table. And our hospitality center will be able to offer that to those that we serve and those in the community wanting a hot meal. The other area of the hosp, the first part of the development is our hospitality center, and that will actually allow us to have a, actually home base for our volunteer department. We are blessed with about ten thousand volunteers that donate their time annually to the Open Door Mission, and we need to have a home base for them, and that will be located in our hospitality center. Also, fifty percent of those that actually come to the Open Door Mission to seek recovery or maybe safe shelter at our Lyte House, our victim's domestic violence. Our current community kitchen is located in the front of our men's center. And our new hospitality center will allow those that maybe do not feel safe entering our men's center to do so in a very respectful and dignitized manner. We have life-changing programs on our campus. In fact, if you support the Open Door Mission, thank you. Your investment is solid. Almost ninety-one percent of our graduates are clean and sober one year after graduation, and we continue to see life transformation on our campus. I'm going to turn this over to Matt to talk a little bit more about the development of our campus. Unless, is this the appropriate time to answer any questions about what we currently do, Eric? Okay.
Either way.
Thank you, Candace. And apologize and thanks a lot for helping me out through that. Going to struggle there for a little bit, giving you some imaginative tape talk, so I'll get straight to the point now. So as Candace had mentioned, this is, we're searching for, we're requesting a large project special use permit for a zoned general industrial area. The campus currently has three, three buildings, or three buildings and three proposed buildings. And so we appreciate the support of Eric's, Eric and Mike. We've met with them a couple of times prior to this, and we appreciate the opportunity to present this project to you to help facilitate approval of future projects that the mission is, is striving. The next exhibit here is just a quick overlay site plan that kind of gives you an idea as to what is existing on the site as far as housing units and what is proposed. The current housing unit total is five hundred and fifty-five units spread throughout the three existing buildings. And then future projects that we're not proposing at this time, they'll, they'll be coming forward at a later date. But there are future housing projects to add a hundred and thirty-one units to the, to the project. The next exhibit is an overall site plan and with the work of, of Eric and Mike's group. The intent here is to provide a base map, or if you will, for the landscape and the surrounding right-of-way improvements in addition to the proposed tree canopies, et cetera, to meet the zoning requirements within the campus. And the intent here is to, to add the code-required trees along the perimeter as well as add additional trees to the interior of the, of the site. And so this would set the base, baseline, if you will, for all the three future projects that, that will come to you in front of the permits and, and planning. The first major project that we're going to propose, that we are proposing, and it's actually in the permit queue, is the hospitality center. The hospitality center will be replay, or shifting a current function that's currently within the men's center and basically replicating that, I'm sorry, shifting that program and square footage and in program cost. And the intent of that, as Candace alluded to, was to meet the needs of the community and also provide a safe shelter for the men that are on the, within the facility and the women and families that are on that, within the facility. And the, to provide that safe environment for both of those communities. Not, not to say the least, the, the campus overall, Candace and her group have done a really good job of orchestrating a, a, a unique palette across all the project types or all the project buildings with a good combination of, of masonry brick and metal panel, and it's kept that consistency throughout the campus. And so the future projects also represent that, that continuity of material, both in the brick and the, and the metal panel. So the elevations that were, that I'm showing quickly for the men's center, for the hospitality center, very low-profile building, predominantly brick and metal panel on that ground floor with some visibility into the, to the facility with, with glazing. As I move on to the future permanent supportive housing projects that are planned, these are adjacent to North Twenty-Third Street. There are two projects in the queue. Each of those have a combination of one, two, and three-bedroom units for families as well as single occupancy units. And so just quickly to get through, so in a matter of time. The first project is a three-story housing unit. Again, you see the character of the project with the, with the brick, the beige brick and then the dark metal panel. The representative ground floor with amenities on the right-hand side, units, typical units on a single-loaded corridor. And then as you move through the building, the next two floors are predominantly units bound by a single-loaded corridor. And then they, kind of walking around those elevations real quick. And then the last project is a little. And then the last project is a little bit larger in scale. It's a five-story building, L-shaped building on the southeast corner of the site, a little bit more intensive amenities with a little bit more office support due to the nature and size of this project. And then ground floor will have supportive housing units. And then a typical floor plan here for levels two through five, a single-loaded, or a double-loaded corridor with units facing both directions. And then a very quick kind of elevation running around the building on all four sides, again representing the beige brick and then the darker metal panel on the top. And with that, entertain any questions from the board.
So, this is just going to be completed, the pro-projecting phases then, correct? Is that due to funding primarily?
Correct.
Okay.
Construction costs and inflation, which we cannot chase, have changed a lot of the cost for this expansion and so we will do more fundraising.
So what is your current percentage of men versus women that you service right now?
Currently.
I noticed that the men's unit is going to be done first.
The Garland Thompson Men's Center currently has three hundred beds and mats in emergency services and we have ninety-six SRO units and those units are used for the journey to work, new life recovery, the Veterans Housing First Program, and then they have thirty-two units for permanent supportive housing. Everything in the expansion is, there's not new programming. It's everything we already currently do. We already offer emergency services, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing. This is just, again, expanding what we already are offering.
You offer very valuable service, obviously, and thank you for your twenty-eight years of work in this area. It's very, very important, obviously. What do you see in the next five, I'm just trying, I want to create some visibility for the general public here as to what the real issue is and maybe what the issue may be going forward as well.
Yeah, you know, currently, we have a housing crisis in our community. I mean, you obviously know that. We have people staying longer in emergency shelter and we have people graduating, even though they're graduating from a recovery program and twenty-six percent are going to college, they have nowhere to move to. That's safe and affordable and drug-free. So people are staying on our campus longer. They're asking us for safe, affordable housing. We have only, on our campus currently, forty-one two- and three-bedroom apartments and sixty-four SRO units for rent. They're full with a waiting list. But we have the ground and we want to expand in the permanent supportive housing because we've seen the measured outcomes. We, in the last five years, have had eight families save enough to be first-time homeowners and over thirty-five families pay off all their credit card debt. And that's through supportive housing with what we can provide with permanent supportive housing. You mentioned that the hospitality center is the first building that's being, and we have all the money for that project, just to be clear. And that is to support what we're already offering on our campus. That is the most needed item first. And then the second building is the five-floor permanent supportive housing. That has to be built for two main reasons. One is we need to create a safe therapeutic space for men that are seeking recovery that is not right amongst the emergency service where we have active using. It's really hard, it's a trigger for people who are trying to stay clean and sober to be living in the same environment with men that are still actively using. And so that five-floor facility will accommodate not only the recovery program and administration, but expand permanent supportive housing. And then the third building is family permanent supportive housing. That's forty-one more apartments for families that we, again, currently already offer. I hope that helps.
Candace, what, do you think your timing might be for each of those?
Sure. As soon as city planning approves our permits for hospitality center, we're going to turn dirt. And then the second project is the five-floor permanent supportive housing. For lack of a better word, we call it home, we're calling it Holmes Haven. Morgan Holmes is a longtime businessman in our community that made it possible for us to have that property. And we are in the queue and been invited to apply for the Crane Program through the tax credits. So as soon as we work our way through that process, we will move forward on that project.
And you, you have a pretty good success rate of getting people the life skills and maybe the work skills to be productive citizens as well.
I believe so. In business, you are looking for recidivism and that's repeat customers and we are not.
Yeah.
Ninety-one percent of our graduates are clean and sober one year after graduation. Your state-run programs are eighteen percent. I'm a solid investment. Ninety cents of every dollar goes directly to guest services at the Open Door Mission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so as part of this use type, the zoning code does require convening of a non-commercial day shelter advisory committee. So that committee met last Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, recommended approval of the project by a vote of six to zero. That includes members of the planning department, police department, which includes a deputy chief as well as the captain of the precinct that covers this area. It included a neighboring property, which was a representative from the corrections facility. The city council member was not able to join. But it was good conversation and obviously it's just additional oversight for this unique use type. So that went well and, as I said, recommended for approval of six to zero by that committee. There are two waivers that I do want to point out that are being requested and supported. It's provided this board votes accordingly with those in mind. It would go to the zoning board of appeals next week. Those two waivers are, the site is within three hundred feet of a residentially-zoned property that is actually an undeveloped city-owned property. Most of the surrounding zoning is industrial. And then as well, to have twenty-four-hour care requires a waiver from the zoning board, which we obviously are supportive of. And this site, you know, as well as others in the community have that operation and it's pretty standard. So, obviously, it's a high-quality use, there's a great need. I do want to point out, because the site is a civic use and it's over ten acres in size with the industrial zoning, it, the large project special use permit does need to proceed to city council, so we have that. And then we also have the conditional use permit for the specific use. So there are the same conditions of approval for each one. I will, I will read them together and I think one vote would be appropriate. So, staff recommends approval of the large project special use permit to allow development over ten acres in the G I district, subject to the eleven conditions, and approval of the conditional use permit to allow a non-commercial day shelter in the G I district, subject to the eleven conditions.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve a large project special use permit to allow developer, development over ten acres in the G I district, subject to the eleven conditions of staff report, approval of the conditional use permit to allow a non-commercial day shelter in the G I district, subject to the same eleven conditions.
I have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Payne?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Good job, Candace. Agenda item number five, case C seven dash twenty-four dash seventy-four. Applicant Steve Fowler requests approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple-family residential in the C C district. I'm sorry, C C district, it's a MCC overlay pending. This was laid over from our March meeting, location southeast of Two Hundred Fourth Street and West Dodge Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Andrew Rec with Foley Shawl Engineering, one-four-five-zero-three, here as a representative of the applicant. Since the layover, we have updated and resubmitted the site plan and building elevations per those planning and urban design comments. The primary updates being building materials, planting mitigation plan, a building setback from the parking lot, and then a natural trail that was proposed on-site has been updated to be at least twenty feet away from the neighboring properties. I think we showed it a little closer previously. And then another item that was clarified with our updated site plan was a wrought iron fence to be included on the east side of the property. And that is not a privacy fence. It would be a six-foot-tall fence to match what is there in the neighboring storage unit property. That's what they installed along their neighbor's property lines, so. And that was something that we discussed at a neighborhood meeting back on December eighteenth. And we had a pretty good showing there of people bordering the property at that time. So here to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so obviously Andrew updated what they have addressed. There's just a few small items that will need to be finalized before issuance of a building permit, so making sure that trail location matches on the site plan and landscape plan as well as some, a small amount of landscape screening that's required. So, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit to allow multi-family residential in the C C district, subject to the eight conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow multiple-family residential in the C C district, subject to the eight conditions.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Yep. Agenda items six and nine will take together. They were on for approval, they've been removed. Agenda item number six, case C three dash twenty-four dash ninety-three. Applicant Centrus Federal Credit Union requests approval of amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from low-density residential to office-commercial. Location, northeast of Sixty-Sixth Street and Ames Avenue. And agenda item number nine, case C ten dash twenty-four dash ninety, C ten dash twenty-four dash ninety-one, C seven dash twenty-four dash ninety-two. Applicant Centrus Federal Credit Union requests rezoning from R five thirty-five and C C to L O with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district, along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow financial services in the L O district. Location, northeast of Sixty-Sixth Street and Ames Avenue. Here from the applicant, please.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, seventeen-hundred Farnham Street. The description of the item may have been longer than what I have to add. It is a lot, but it is fairly straightforward, really, ultimately. So this is the site here with this parcel and this parcel of a proposed future branch for Centrus Federal Credit Union. As you can see here, this parcel is zone C C. This parcel is currently zoned R five. And so the goal here is to amend the future land use map and to rezone then both parcels to L O to allow for, make sure I get north up there, for Centrus to build a branch there that would be both a walk-in banking opportunity for their customers and a drive-through opportunity as well. So it's a little bit hard to see without the overlay, or overlaying them on one another, but what's up from my pen is the parcel that is currently, more or less, is the parcel that is currently R five. And that's the one, I think, that causes the need for the amendment to the future land use map. And then the rest of the request is to rezone the entire parcel to L O, so you have a single parcel with a single zoning district. And then the rest of the approvals to create that parcel and allow the Centrus branch to be there. So with that, I've got folks here with me from Centrus and also from Olson Associates. If there's any questions that I can't answer, otherwise we're happy to try and answer anything you might have or sit down and hear the rest of it.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Come forward, please, give your name and address.
My name is Rebecca Whitesell. Address is four-five-one-zero, North Six-Five Avenue, four-five-one-one, North Six-Five Avenue, four-five-one-five, North Six-Five Avenue, which is my primary, and four-five-three-eight, North Six-Five Avenue. So I am also the previous co-owner, business of the property of six-five-seven-two Ames Avenue, of which the primary piece of land, I guess you could say, is being looked at. And so I am on that block and very much a proponent and have given this much consideration and it was an easy decision for me, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there, if you were?
Well, we just had a question, I mean, so I'm not really, I don't know, I have to go up there.
You can come on up if you want to. We'll need your name and address, but go ahead and ask your question.
Anne Horan, H-O-R-A-N, the six-five-zero-four Ames Avenue. Some of the neighbors received a letter and they were just kind of confused on what to expect, so. And I kind of answered my question thinking about it and reading through this. So, none of the neighboring properties are being rezoned. It is just those two sections, so it's not even going to affect them at all. It's just letting them know, okay. So some of them were kind of jumping to the conclusion and thinking a lot of different things. So we were just kind of concerned how it would affect the neighbors, so. But I don't think we have a problem, like if they're not being rezoned, because that was my question, if they are also part of that group, you know, what the new zone would mean for them, but in their having a house on the property. So I think we're fine, as long as nothing's happening to the neighbors.
Yep. Thank you, Anne.
Thanks for being here.
Are there any other proponents slash opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I don't think David needs to come up. I think Anne's question got answered. Any additional comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, so agenda item number six is a small adjustment to the future land use map to extend the office commercial for that R five zoned piece. When you look along the entirety of the Ames Avenue corridor, it's inconsistent how far the office commercial encroaches into the neighborhood. So we think it is matching in alignment with the Ames Avenue corridor. Specifically for agenda item number nine, this would be the consolidation of the zoning and applying the MCC overlay as well as the conditional use permit to allow the banking facility. So just a few small minor changes, a few landscaping items, verification buffer trees, you know, adding a sidewalk, you know, from the front door to provide access to Ames Street, or Ames Avenue. There's a bus stop right there. So just a few minor things that will need to be finalized before submission of a building permit. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, oh, sorry, let's go number six first.
Two separate votes.
Yes, two separate votes, two agenda items here. For the land use amendment, agenda item number six, staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion, a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
For agenda item number nine, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R five thirty-five and C C to L O, approval of the MCC overlay district, approval of the conditional use permit to allow financial services, subject to the seven conditions.
Do we have a motion?
Question for the approval of the rezoning from R five thirty-five and C C to L O, approval of the MCC overlay district and approval of the conditional use permit to allow financial services in the L O district, subject to the seven conditions.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
I believe we're on agenda item fifteen. Case C eleven dash twenty-two dash one-eighty. Applicant Talented Tenth Group Inc. requests approval of a major amendment to the planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location, thirty-three twenty-four North Sixteenth Street. Location, thirty-three twenty-four North Sixteenth Street. Don, you're up.
Don Curry, representing the Talented Tenth Group, address thirty-three twenty-four North Sixteenth Street. So we resubmitted the major amendment to the PUR in much more professional manner, I'll first say that. And then also, we came back with trying to get as close to the original approved PUR as possible, and that included us going back in and practically installing all of the windows that were in the original PUR. And also, too, we're going to proceed with using veneer brick on the sides, which kind of helped out with our budget. And, again, additional windows that we added in the back as well. So having done such, we believe that we pretty much kind of got as close as we could to the PUR, and just wanting to proceed forward. To date, we've still been going through the internal inspections, so we've passed the plumbing inspection, the electrical inspection, and also the HVAC and the sprinkler. Right now, we're actually making some adjustments to the framing. So once the framing inspection is passed, we're going to go ahead and start doing the insulation and drywall. So the last phase would be for us to be able to proceed with the exterior.
I just have a question, Don. So I didn't compare these elevations with your original ones, but it seems like you've added some more windows back.
Yes.
Have you already done that work, or you have to do that once we go through this process?
We actually went ahead and added the windows, because we kind of looked at it as if, even if this was denied, we still would have had to add them anyway, and I got a good sale, a good deal, I'll put it to you that way, to where I jumped on that immediately, because, I mean, that's the main thing, that's, you know, kind of, besides, again, you know, my ignorance of the process, but yeah, just kind of saving nickels, most definitely.
Good. Positive feedback from the neighbors?
Yeah, 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 that worked out well. I mean, Mr. Morris, as you suggested, that I have a community engagement meeting, and that was a learning process on my part, because, I mean, I kind of went in of the thought that, hey, I'm from this area, grew up over here, so no one's going to, no one's going to have anything to say about what I was doing. And, yeah, so that was a good process to where now, we come to the agreement to where, you know, we've already got, we're in the process of getting the permit issued for the development on Sixteenth and Spencer, which will mirror this one, and we're now going through the planning phase for Sixteenth and Wirt. That one, we're looking to do nine units, so kind of agreed with Ms. Phat and the rest of the community that before we even get to the point of submitting anything to the planning department, that we'd sit down with the community just to make sure that we were on the same page. So things are, safe to say, things kind of worked out for the best.
I'm glad. I know you kind of got your nose bloody the last time, but you rolled up your sleeves and went to work.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Job well done.
Yeah, felt like a Rocky. Straight up, I did.
Any other questions for Don? Thank you, Don.
All right, thank you all, appreciate you all.
Any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Good.
Seeing none, oh, whoop.
Come in, because he's doing a good job. What can I say?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, you know all the history. You know, we appreciate Don sticking with it and coming to an acceptable solution, and the planning department is on board with this design, and we're obviously recommending approval, so we want him to be successful, and I think Don's learned a few lessons along the way, and hopefully, moving forward, that will make his future projects more seamless and continue to work with him on those. So staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the PUR overlay district.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the major amendment to the planned unit redevelopment overlay district.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pay?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you all. See you, Don.
Agenda item number seventeen, case C eight dash twenty-four dash ninety-four, C ten dash fifteen dash two forty-six, applicant Shelter Belt Theater. It was on for layover, it was pulled off. Request approval of a special use permit to allow indoor entertainment in the GI District, along with a major amendment to a parking adjustment for a mixed-use development. Location, forty-three eighty-three Nicholas Street, Unit two oh four. Is the applicant here?
I am here. My name is Daniel Wach, W-A-C-H. I live at four eight three five California Street. I am the executive director of Shelter Belt Theater. We are a small nonprofit, volunteer-run theater, who's been looking for a home for five years, almost five years, that meets all of the city requirements for fire safety, handicapped accessibility, ADA-compliant bathrooms, and sufficient numbers. And we found this space in the Omar Baking Building, and the part that we're discussing today is really the parking adjustment. There was a line left off of my, sorry, I will find my pages that I'm going to put up on the overhead, my application that lists one of the units in the building, which is Unit two hundred, which is the Omar event space. It is six thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet, and they have three permanent employees. What was included in the packet already is the discussion of item three under our operating adjustment, or operating statement. Does explain the Omar Events Building and all of the other users, some, there are, you know, other users in the building that have assembly and parking requirements. The City Light Church has the most parking requirements, and the Event Center and Shelter Belt Theater do not overlap with the City Light Church's use of the parking, other than a few minor evening events where they have a small group. But as far as church services, neither one of us will be having events during that church. So the parking use is complimentary. What wasn't on there is, it was in the operation statement, but it just wasn't on the one page with the list of tenants. But the Event Center, and this is from their operating statement, from when they were approved for the parking adjustment. They normally run events in the two hundred to three hundred and fifty range, and that is consistent. They do about fifty-two events a year. They don't, they're not, it's not a hugely busy event center. So even with their maximum of three hundred that they were approved for, and our maximum of seventy-two, that's four hundred and twenty-two, which is still less than the church uses. And the code requirement of four to one requires at least a hundred and six parking spaces, and we have dedicated to the building substantially more parking spaces than that. One of the other things that was questioned, sorry, got lots of papers, was the fact that on our architect drawing here, this lower section of the southeast parking lot was not filled in. When this was drawn, it hadn't been paved and striped yet, so I don't have a new architect drawing, but as you can see from the aerial photograph, it is filled in and paved and marked for parking, and that's an additional twenty-five parking units beyond what this plot showed. And also, the City Light Church, since they're the biggest user, they also lease property here for parking, for overflow. There's parking that's been created on Izzard Street. There's the school parking lot that's a block north of the main parking lot that's dedicated to the building of the three that are dedicated, that has been used for overflow by the church at times, so that's, I'm just asking if there's, if, you know, for the approval for the parking waiver, based on this information, so that we can move forward with our plans. I, you know, I don't...
Daniel, I have a few questions.
Sure.
Obviously, you're a tenant, you're not a building owner, so you're going into one of the space. How will the parking be divided? Is there a plan for stalls that you will use, or is it just first come, first served? If there's, you know, if there's a performance with a full house capacity, hopefully, for your organization, at the same time as a wedding with three hundred and fifty people, how, has there been conversations with the building owner? Has that been worked out? Where do you park? Where do they park? Or is it just whoever?
All of the lots are fair use, as far as, you know, first come, first served, so there is no plan, and they, there wasn't, it wasn't felt that there was a need for a plan. We could, I mean, that is something we could do if you think that's a requirement. You know, it's just a matter of, you know, having our patrons know where the parking lots that they can park in are available, and just looking for a space is really what we're at.
Any other questions for Daniel? Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Additional comments? Eric?
Yeah, so I appreciate Daniel getting up there and talking through and presenting the numbers. There's a lot of different sites, a lot of different parking lots. You know, one thing I'm a little unsure on is just some of the numbers with the parking, with the submittal, there was the mention of two hundred and eighty-three stalls on site. I'm wondering now if that includes the property to the south of Izzard. There's also mention of the three hundred and twenty-seven stalls that factors in the school property, as well as on-street parking. But when we look at, you know, I'll say the parking lot directly to the north of the Omar Building, and then the parking on the east and west sides of the building, comes out to about two hundred stalls. So maybe it wasn't factored in that southern property, and I don't know, you know, Daniel mentioned the church using that, I don't know if everybody has rights to that. So I think there just needs to be some clarification on the parking numbers. And obviously, we want a mix of uses to be able to work. We don't want to overpark, and obviously, we want to utilize, you know, parking that's available, but we also want to make sure that it fits. We've had sites that it's become problematic, and so we just don't want to get in that situation. So from a staff perspective, I think allowing us to continue that conversation with Daniel, let's get a site plan that reflects, you know, the parking area on the southeast corner. You know, we can look at whatever records we may have and continue to help. There's been a lot of use permits on this site. So from a staff perspective, we're more comfortable coming back in thirty days, you know, to the May meeting. I know, I know he's probably trying to get going, but we do think that's probably an important component, just to make sure that it's clear what the parking is, who has available parking, and then just compare those tenants and uses. So staff is recommending layover, but obviously, we want to keep this moving, so we would want to work with Daniel and get the information that we need.
Yep. Do we have a motion?
Motion to layover.
Second.
A motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pay?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number twenty, say what? Okay, agenda item number twenty-three, case C seven dash twenty-four dash one oh eight, C ten dash twenty-four dash one oh seven. Applicant Todd Adams, this was on for layover, it was pulled off. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district, with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location, fifty-one twenty-one North one hundred and thirty-second Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Dustin Shropshire, seven five two five North one hundred and first Street, here in Omaha. I'm with RW Engineering and Surveying. We are here on behalf of the applicant Todd Adams. We've been doing the civil engineering and land surveying work for this property. And so what we're asking for here is the MCC overlay to be added to this property and for the conditional use permit to allow for indoor sports and recreation in this zone. And so we put together a plan and submitted that to you folks, and we are here to answer any questions that you might have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dustin. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
I don't know that I'm an opponent, but I do have some questions, and I'm glad you have this thing, because I'm a visual person.
Need your name and address.
Oh, sorry. My name is Kathy Hand. My husband is Tyler Hand, and I live at one two nine six nine Camden Avenue. Our backyard backs up to this proposed development. So the main thing that my husband and I are worried about is the water runoff. We have had, over, we've lived there for probably twenty years, and we have had several incidents where we've actually had water come into our family room, so that our carpet was sopping wet, because what happened was, when we first moved in, it was graded so that there were, you know, it wasn't just a smooth runoff. And I think to make it prettier, whatever, they graded it so that it was nice and flat, and all the water came towards our house. And so like I said, we had water in our house. In another incident, we had sinkholes in our yard that were probably as deep as this podium. Our six-foot fence fell over because the water came rushing in and, you know, undid the fence.
Sorry, Kathy, what's your address?
One two nine six nine Camden. Are you looking to see where we're at on there?
That looks like we're down...
Yeah, we're down at the very corner, which is, like I said, where the water runs. I know when the come-and-go came in up on the corner, someone said that there weren't curbs put in, so that probably didn't help with runoff from rain or whatever from the street. But at least we had this whole grassy area to kind of try to absorb it. So now, of course, what we're worried about is there's a parking lot, so that's going to be easy for the water to run off. There is a berm that is there, and I'm just worried that with construction and whatever, you know, maybe the berm will be messed with or eroded or whatever, because that kind of, that berm funnels the water to a drain that's in that corner. So, you know, we're not opposed to whatever's coming in. You know, we knew when we bought the house that something eventually would come in, but over the years, we've just had so much trouble with water, and we just want to speak up now, so that whoever's doing it can do the, take the appropriate steps to guard us from being flooded, because it was no fun having water in the house, and it was no fun having holes so big that my dog disappeared in them, and, you know, we had to wait for the fence to be rebuilt, and so that's the main problem. To add another small problem is, sometimes they mow that lawn or that area back there, and sometimes they don't, but our fence seems to be forgotten, and we get weeds taller than the six-foot fence, and every year, I have to call the city and ask someone to please come out and mow along there. So that's my two stories.
Very good.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Dustin, did you want to come up?
Yes, absolutely.
And give you an opportunity to address Kathy's concerns.
Absolutely. Thanks, Kathy.
Especially the stormwater and post-construction stormwater management plan.
Absolutely. Thanks, Kathy, for bringing that stuff up. We didn't hear about any of those stories previous to our involvement with the property. This is a bit of a unique site. There is no city storm infrastructure on this site. There are easements across the site that allow for the conveyance of that water to get down to those area inlets. And our development plan accounts for containing all of the water on our property. And so we have an above-ground storm basin that will capture all of that water. Our parking lot does include curb and gutter, and we are showing two curb cuts on the east side of that that would allow for that drainage to get into the basin. And then, it would be piped underground, uh, into that area inlet. So there would be no overland flow from our contribution to the site, or from our development to the site. So, um, hopefully, any water that falls on this site today, right now, all it does is it drains to the back of the lot, it runs down that ditch, and hopefully, it gets to that area inlet. We intend to fix all of those issues on this lot by improving it and providing for that stormwater detention basin. And that should fix a lot of the problems. Additionally, as the designer of this, uh, grading plan, I took a look at all of the elevations at that back fence and made sure to grade them away from the fence and provide any rainwater that, you know, doesn't fall in our parking lot and get to that storm basin, gives it a place to come and run away from that fence and then run overland down to that area inlet. Unfortunately, what happens after that inlet, uh, you know, we can only work within our boundaries of our property, but the intent is to not adversely affect any lot that abuts this property. So, we've, we've tried really hard to, um, accommodate for that stormwater.
Dustin, would you repeat what you first said? I, Kathy was busy and about you intend to ca, capture all water. Would you
Sure.
repeat that for us?
Let me put this up on the overhead here, and hopefully, this might clear it up a little. So, over here on the left side of the plan, it looks a little confusing with all the lines, but this is actually an elevated stormwater detention basin. So, any water that comes into our site, it's going to come across the parking lot through a curb cut, both at the north and south end of the parking lot, and it will run into this basin. So we've put basically a big trough here to catch any water that falls on our site. And then, we will pipe that with a, uh, underground pipe and connect that to that existing area inlet. So we're not even pushing anything additional overland. Um, there are stormwater easements on that north and east side over here for the conveyance of other water. And I know you mentioned the Come and Go, uh, property, which has been, um, developed off to the north there, and I believe that there might even be some development plans in the works for the property to the northeast, a car wash, if I'm not mistaken. And so, both of those businesses have to get their water across our land over to that area inlet. And, um, the existing stormwater does just kind of, uh, dump out onto the lot, and then where it goes from there, you know, uh, the grade takes it. And so I think that's why it's probably going the wrong way into your yard. And so that's why we
You said that there's no, uh, there's no conveyance outside of your site there, so I noticed you've got that hundred-year drain, uh, drainageway easement there. Also, if, uh, if, if, if your site receives over a half inch, that containment probably is, is full, right?
Correct.
And so then, it, and you're saying it then is conveyed to the southeast corner, and where does it go from there?
From this, uh, overflow structure that would be in that
Right.
detention basin, it would be piped underground into the area inlet.
Okay, underground, but, but that, those are lots there that, that are houses there, right?
The area inlets on our property, uh, down at the southeast corner.
It what?
It's down at the southeast corner, uh, of our property. It doesn't come through very well in this image, but there's a large concrete structure.
Does it go into a storm sewer then?
It does.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed that.
Down, downstream of ways it, it goes into there. There is underground
Okay.
conveyance, uh, just not for the lots to the north or for our lot.
Got it here. Good.
Okay.
That's just what I wanted to know.
All right. Anything else you wanted to say, Dustin?
Uh, no, we've, like I said, we've, we've made, uh, our, our best attempt at grading that so that the water that comes from these northern lots, uh, stays inside the, the little ditch there and gets over to that area inlet. Um, we would love to coordinate with the future development that's proposed to be, uh, put in up to the northeast of our site, um, if the opportunity is, is there. Thanks.
And Dustin, uh, while you're, while you're there, we are recommending layover to, for additional coordination with Public Works regarding those easements. You're aware of that, correct?
I, I was not aware of the layover before today. I got here today.
Okay, but, um, I think there's just some additional coordination with, uh, Public Works and their different divisions to make sure that, you know, all of those existing easements are being accounted for, and so, um, I just wanted to mention that.
What, what type of action on our part would we need to take to help that process?
I guess Ryan, I don't know if, if you have any additional information. Obviously, uh, Ryan is from the Traffic Division, but he is a representative here from Public Works, so I'll defer to him.
Thanks.
Ryan Haas at Public Works, um, really just the Design Division requested you reach out and coordinate, so reach out to Brian Lotus and start those conversations.
Any other comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, eh, from a zoning perspective, the amount of parking is, is being provided and is an acceptable, um, for the, uh, proposed use with the indoor courts facilities. Doesn't sound like there's much spectator seating or anything like that, so, uh, this is mainly just a practice facility, and I think we're familiar with those, and, usually, the issue with parking comes up from, um, tournaments and that sort, and obviously, you'll probably have some parents hang out around the, the interior of the facility just like you would any other, um, similar indoor court facility. So, um, but because of that additional coordination that is required with Public Works regarding those sewers, the easement, stormwater, uh, there is a recommendation for layover.
Before I take on Sure, come on up, Kathy. Get, give your name and address again, please.
My name is Kathy Hand. My address is one-two-nine-six-nine Camden. Um, what I have is for you is this question right here where you said there's this big basin that's gonna catch water, and then it's gonna run to here, and then this pipe you're saying here is underground?
Correct.
And it runs to another underground?
Correct.
Pipe which then goes out to the sewer?
Correct.
Okay, because my house is right here. And so it's, it's right there where everything comes to a head. So you're saying that all of this water is just gonna be underground? It's not going to affect me or my yard?
Not from our development, no.
Okay.
Now, we are not also containing
Come on up to the mic, Dustin.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We are not planning to contain in our stormwater basin any of the water from these northern lots.
Mm-hmm.
So that will run through a graded swale on this east side of the property.
That you guys will put in?
That we will grade in, yes. In order to build this site and level it out, we have to bring in about twenty-five thousand cubic yards of dirt, and so there's going to be a, a lot of grade change there um, to be able to put that in.
Okay, so are you saying that this will be higher than, um, than the ground is now where the, the building's on and everything?
Actually, on the west side of the lot, will be lower than the street. So, uh, when you walk into the building, it'll be lower than One Hundred and Thirty-second Street. But in order to provide a flat spot,
Mm-hmm.
we have to fill in the backside and then lower down the front side.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for letting me ask that.
All right. You feel good, Kathy?
Well, we'll see when
We'll see when the first rain comes.
When it comes.
Yeah.
Maybe I need his phone number so I can call him and have him come pump the water out of my house.
Okay, and you gave your recommendation. Any other comments, questions, or do we have a motion?
Move the layover.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
I think that was the last item. Um, do we have a motion for last month's pre-meeting minutes and public meeting minutes?
Moved to pre, approve the minutes from the public meeting and the pre-meeting from March.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Epstein.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
And do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Uh, Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Paige?
No, no.
Yes.
Soto Longo?
No one's ever done that.
Soto Longo?
I have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Which, which agenda? Which case number?
No, just, uh, like fifteens.
The Mormon Trail. That was, that was recommended for approval. We, look, yeah, we have.
About what, sir?
Is that with the parking?
Randy Johnson, yes, we, we do have it. It's part of the record.